Welcome to this evening's regular business meeting. We do have a new commissioner sitting up here with us. Please welcome Commissioner Tashae Allen. Commissioner Allen, is there anything you would like to say right quick?
Thank you Chairman Turner for the warm welcome. Hello everyone, my name is Tashae Allen. And it is truly an honor to be here today representing the great residents of District 3. I am committed to being responsive, transparency, and delivering results for the citizens here in Clayton County. My hope is to have the younger generation step up, get inspired, and one day run for office as well. Thank you guys, and for those of you that have made it possible for me to be here today, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
All right. It's been a long time since we've been full up here, so it's a good feeling, it's a good feeling. All right, we're gonna have our invocation, my Reverend Jerry T. Anderson of the New Macedonian Baptist Church in Riverdale. That will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, if you will, please stand with me.
Let us bow our heads. Our heavenly Father, we do come this evening to say thank you, God, for another great day that you have blessed us and how you woke us up on this morning. We thank you for our chairman, we thank you for our commissioners. We pray, God, for the people and the great people of Clayton County. We thank you, God, for the leadership of Clayton County. We ask, God, that you will bless them tremendously and give them favor in everything that they do. We thank you, Father, for this opportunity to bless this meeting tonight, bless those participants and those who come to hear the news coming from our commissioners. We thank you now, Father, for this opportunity to bless us and protect us as we do this in your name, that is the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to our November 19th, 2024, regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I have a couple here. First is to remove item nine from the agenda. A flag voluntary benefits, they are, there are still some conversations that need to be had, is there a second to remove it from the agenda?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Also, I'd like to remove from the agenda item 32. Resolution 2024-271, resolution to sever the positions of the clerk of Superior Court and the clerk of magistrate court. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. And my last one, Madam Clerk, is a request for a budget amendment to increase the expenses of opera funds from Central Services. Correct me if I'm wrong here.
It's going from ORS to-
ORS, to Office of Resiliency and Sustainability, to Central Services, in the amount of $10,000. And the reason it's an emergency item to be added into the consent agenda is to give them more time to be able to expend those funds. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Madam Clerk, you had a scribbler's error to let people know about as well, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, thank you. Item number 12, there is a correction, the total amount for the refund is $160. It reads 85, so again, that is $160 for item number 12.
Are there any other adoptions?
Can she repeat that one more time?
Yes, sir, for item number 12, the license refund total is $160 instead of the 85 that's listed.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other additions, adoptions to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I would like to, and these will, recommendations to be pulled from the consent to the regular. Resolution 2024-267, which is number 28.
Clear on that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Number-
28.
28. And together with that one, number 31. Resolution 270, 2024-270.
Both of those will be on the regular agenda.
On the regular agenda, yes, and also number 30, which is Resolution 2024-269.
Any others?
That's it.
Are there any others, anybody else? All right, here and none, I'll take a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous.
First on the agenda, we have our proclamation. Clayton County celebrates the 100th birthday of Mrs. Ethel Mae Fort, presented by Commissioner Elena Reeves.
Whereas, the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, takes great pride in recognizing and celebrating the milestones of its esteemed residents. And whereas, Mrs. Ethel Mae Forts, a cherished member of our community, was born on October 24th, 1924, in Hampton, Georgia, to Willie Mae Suter and Raymond Suter in Henry County. And whereas, like many black women of her time, Mrs. Forts worked for years as a domestic housekeeper. She then dedicated over a decade of service at Clayton General Hospital, now known as Southern Regional Medical Center in Riverdale, Georgia. Through her devotion, resiliency, and steadfast faith, she contributed to improving the community around her. And whereas, Mrs. Forts, affectionately known as Ethel Mae by her loved ones, has been a lifelong member of Wardell Methodist Church, where she continues to find spiritual inspiration and guidance under the leadership of Pastor Joe N. Perry. And whereas, Mrs. Forts has demonstrated strength and perseverance throughout her life, overcoming challenges, including a broken hip that led to her residency at Lowell Park Nursing Facility in Ellenwood, Georgia. And whereas, on October 24th, 2024, surrounded by family and friends, Mrs. Forts celebrated her 100th birthday with tears of joy, heartfelt reunions, and the singing of her favorite hymn, Precious Lord. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Clayton County Board of Commissioners honors Mrs. Ethel Mae Forts on her 100th birthday, celebrates her remarkable life and legacy, and extends heartfelt wishes for her continued health and happiness. Therefore, I, Commissioner Elena Reeves, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby celebrate, congratulate, and send heartfelt birthday wishes to Mrs. Ethel Mae Forts. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 19th day of November, 2024.
Happy birthday to you, Mr. Fort, happy birthday to you.
Clayton County recognizes November 20th, 2024, as Geographic Information Systems Day.
Whereas, Geographic Information Systems, GIS, have become an essential tool in managing, analyzing, and interpreting data related to geography and space, providing critical insights for effective decision-making across sectors such as public safety, transportation, environmental conservation, and infrastructure planning. And whereas, GIS technology enhances the ability of local governments, including Clayton County, to improve services, increase transparency, and promote efficient resource allocation by using spatial data to make informed decisions for the benefit of all residents. And whereas, Clayton County has recognized the importance of GIS in promoting better understanding of the community's needs, fostering economic development, supporting emergency response efforts, and enhancing overall quality of life for citizens. And whereas, GIS Day is an international event that highlights the contributions of GIS technology and the professionals who use it, educating the public on its value in solving real-world problems. And whereas, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners acknowledges the contributions of the county's GIS staff and the professionals whose work enables informed decision-making and fosters innovation within the county government. And whereas, GIS Day on November 20th provides an opportunity for Clayton County to join communities around the world in celebrating the impact of GIS on local and global issues, encouraging students, professionals, and the public to explore the power of geography through technology. Now, therefore, we, the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 20th, 2024, as GIS Day in Clayton County, and encourage all residents to recognize the importance of geographic information systems in advancing the well-being of our county and to participate in activities that promote a greater understanding of this vital technology. In witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 19th day of November, 2024.
And next, we have a brief presentation from Marta.
ATL Airport CID's. ATL Airport CID's. Thank you. Everybody, Chairman Turner actually allowed my study team, I'm a project manager at the ATL Airport's-
Thank you. Can you all hear me? Thank you. I am a project manager at the ATL Airport CID's, and Chairman Turner graciously allowed us to come to his 10th annual 5K to gather feedback for my study. At the event, this painting was done by the people of Clayton County, it is actually a paint-by-numbers, Chairman Turner, you contributed to it. So I just wanted to say thank you and present this to you as a token of our gratitude. Thank you very much.
Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time limit, to speak before the board, with a total time of 30 minutes for public comments. Please remember, comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Hugh Beavens.
Yes, sir. My name is Hugh Beavens, I'm in Clayton County, and my concern tonight is animal control. We had some problems a couple of years ago when we had some dogs roaming the neighborhood, and it was tough to get the animal control to come out there, and one of the things was trying to get them on the phone. So, we had some, back around October the 15th, and I called and pressed option number one, and this dog seemed like he was in distress, as well as being roaming the neighborhood, looked like he needed something to eat, or had been in a fight or something, and I called animal control, nobody answered. So, I called back the chairman's office, and the lady answering the phone, I told her what happened, I said, you know, can you get me in touch with somebody? So she took my information, and she says, I'll have somebody get back in touch with you. I said, okay. So, that went on till November 15th, when I talked to Mr. Dixon, I called up again, nobody got back in touch with me. And I told him what happened, and he says, well, I'm sorry to hear that, he says, let me take your information down, and somebody will get back with you. And as of today, haven't heard a word. And, I mean, I thought that's what they're supposed to do, when you have animal control, you have an animal out there either in distress, or, you know, roaming the neighborhood, you can get somebody out there, but it seemed like we had two problems, they won't answer the phone, and when David Dixon took my information, whoever he forwarded it to, put it in file 13. So, that's my issue. Thank you for listening.
Okay, and we'll cut the middleman out, this Chief Roberts is in the back, back there, please take your concerns to him, he will take care of you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Nope? Was that you? You're not on this one, okay, that's fine. And just for everyone's general knowledge, today is a zoning hearing for zoning matters. So there'll be a public hearing for anybody who wants to speak on any specific zoning matter that comes before us at the latter part of the agenda. This here is just for general comments, so if you signed up for it, and you wanted to wait around for the zoning hearings, then you can bypass this process, but you have every right to come forward and still voice your opinion when called on. Emmanuel Glover.
I'm Emmanuel Glover, for Clayton County. I also represent Heartshock of Tribal Ministries. My identity was stole due to one of my properties. I was actually forced out of my property, and I contacted everybody that I needed to before this problem, but I was never given response. The Sheriff Department has pushed me out of my home, I have kids that come to this property, I actually have a kid right now sleeping in his car. And I try to help with my ministry with these young kids that don't have fathers, and come to find out that they actually was evicted from their place as well. So, I invite them into my home, and I give them a place to stay, and then they watch me also get evicted from my home. They helped me put my stuff into storage. I have certain disabilities that I have said, and I even went into court yesterday to explain my disabilities, and I was cut off as well. The heart and pain, and one of my tenants also was harmed while she was asking to go to the restroom to cover up herself because she wasn't proper, and she was physically harmed. So, the passion in me being a minister of this community has really hurt me, and I don't even know where else to go. My family dispersed all over Georgia right now. I have a kid here, and I have a kid there, because I have certain abilities dealing with my health, that I was not even heard, not even in a courtroom yesterday, that left me with tremendous pain. And I don't even know what to do right now as we speak. And I have kids in cars sleeping, because in Clayton County, they was evicted as well. And they knew one place this would be a safe haven, it was a place for me, and they watched my stuff get thrown out on the lawn. And I made calls, emails, everything before this happened, and nothing was done. And all I'm asking is to say that I'm here to, that the community is being harmed and injured, and it feels like there's nowhere and no place to go. And thank you.
Thank you, sir. Dwayne Jones.
Yes, sir, I don't know if this is appropriate, as far as, excuse me, yes, sir, as far as the data center being put in over in Ellenwood.
Yeah, so that's on the zoning matter?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda?
Okay.
So, if you have something to say, this would be a perfect time for you to go ahead, if you will, just state your name and where you live.
All right, well, my name's Dwayne Jones, I live at 3779 Grant Road, Lot 59, Ellenwood. This data center that's going in, from what I understand, they're gonna be tapping into the spring water for their water to cool down, the coals. From what I have done in research, it takes 100,000 to 300,000 gallons of water per day to keep this thing cooled down. I live in Lakeside Mobile Home Community, we have a lake there that's fed by that spring. The lady behind me outside of the park, she has a well that is fed off of that spring. Also, four other houses have wells. And when they take this water, I don't know where the wells are gonna go, but the lady behind me, her great-great-grandpa owned all that property over there, all around Williamson Road and everything. And they're gonna take her well. But anyway, I'm retired from Georgia Power, and I know that they're gonna have to have at least a 230 KB line, or a 500 KB line to go in there, but I understand they're building a substation outside there too. I just feel like we're getting run out. I've been in this county since 1959, love this county, Jonesboro Road was nothing but hamburger heaven, you know, and it's changed over the years. Clayton County used to have the cleanest water in the whole state. I don't know what happened to it, but it just seems like everything is going down, there's too many warehouses being zoned in here. And before long, you're gonna have nothing but warehouses and data centers and all that, and nobody living there, you know? But that's all I got to say, I appreciate you having me up here.
Thank you, sir.
And I'll remember your Christmas, you know?
Thought was definitely going through my mind. All right, David Hammerick.
Madam Clerk, Commissioners, David Hammerick, District 3. Fashion for Fall Camo Overalls, a tribute to Mickey. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank all those in District 3 who voted for me. Thank you to all those who stood on their own two feet and made an independent decision of choice to state that Clayton County needs a change of direction. I want to express my gratitude to all those I met at the candidate forums, events, here at the Board of Commissioners meetings, and while-out door knocking, for being allowed to share a brief moment in time with you. I will be back representing the NRA ILA Division as one of two frontline activist leaders here in the state of Georgia. I'll be talking and promoting gun safety and upholding your rights regardless of party allegiance. This is where I get my nonpartisan working-together outlook from, I deal with the principles of the problem, not the personalities or the party. I'll be back at the food pantry, giving my time to community outreach to help those in need, especially with the holidays so close at hand. Due to the blessings of the good Lord above, I'm able to give back to others. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, a Merry Christmas, and the hope and promise looking forward to the New Year so close at hand. Thanks for all your time and courtesy, I bid a good evening to all, David Hammerick for District 3.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good evening, Chairman, Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, District 3. Commissioners, I just want to congratulate Ms. Tashae Allen for a race well ran, even though my butt got kicked. But on the campaign trail, we had an opportunity to do a lot of conversing, and I really look forward to working with you moving District 3 forward, and the county and beyond, in the spirit of excellence. So, there's a lot of work we gotta do, we have been neglected in District 3 for eight years, so we have a lot of catching up to do. But in the meantime, I reiterate collaboration, and as I move throughout the county, I think a lot of you guys move throughout the county, beautification is a critical part of our embryonic phase of moving this county forward. Now, what I have personally done, as far as conversing with the cities and all of this thing, I get a bit frustrated because at the end of the day, there appears to be a sense of arrogance. So fortunately, code enforcement, I spoke to a couple of officers, they are targeting those signs that go on the Telegram pole. But the weakness in our community is the lack of collaboration with the municipalities. The city of Lord Joe can do one thing, Riverdale can do one thing, the county at large can do one thing, but there's no compatibility there. So I've requested several times that we have a- So I've requested several times that we have a community summit with all seven cities and the Board of Commissioners to try to collaborate on beautification so we can all be on one accord. Because that's the only way that we can send a clear message that we're moving this county forward. And of course, littering is still a problem that we're, we're fighting in this community. So hopefully, hopefully, somebody will take the lead and reach out to the mayors and try to have this summit to discuss a uniform code, but I got lost for words, it's very rare, but code enforcement summit. So we can try to move this county forward in the spirit of excellence. I thank you so much and congratulations, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mickey Garber.
Officer, would you distribute each one of these copies to each of the commissioners? One copy to each, please. You might need one too. Everybody got a copy? Very good. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the board. Education and awareness comes in many ways and forms. I highly recommend you subscribing to this periodical either in print or online. It's informative as to, as to who's who and what's what in the greater metropolitan Atlanta Reports of large building projects, large real estate sales, both residential and commercial. In my reading, very little is written about Clayton County. And if we are mentioned in, in this periodical, it is only in passing. I think this periodical will help me, you, and us be better connected to growth and sustainability in the greater Clayton County area. Even though these are old issues, some of the information in these periodicals will be informative and helpful for me new ideas for our Clayton County. I get no payment or kickbacks in representing them. Are there any questions? Seeing there are none, I'm glad to see that you all agree with me. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mickey.
John Wise. All right. I can't pronounce this last one. San Y verama. Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
The board would now consider the consent agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reeves. Are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it is unanimous.
Our next item is item number 28, Resolution 2024-267, presented by our Chief Staff Attorney, Charles Reed.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. Congratulations, Commissioner Allen. Resolution 2024-267 is a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Clayton County, Georgia, authorizing the certification in the middle of the county's Phase One Large Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4, National Pollutants Discharge Elimination System Permit Reapplication Form to the State of Georgia's Environmental Protection Division to authorize the Chairman or his designate to execute any documents to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerick.
When I was reading this, I was getting it maybe mixed up or confused with what the Water Authority does as far as sewer, septic and all and, what's the other thing? Storm water, that's what it was. When I saw that, I immediately thought Clayton County Water Authority. But this was saying something different. So can you give us the difference, Kevin?
So as, as you know, I'm sorry, Kevin Osby, Clayton County Water Authority, Storm Water Director. This is a every-five-year renewal application to EPD. They require local municipalities to submit a stormwater management plan to keep track of stormwater-related activities. This is strictly stormwater, but they do ask questions about septic tanks. If we got septic tanks in the county, how are they being managed or how are they being Rephrase your question again.
Well, I'm trying to figure out the difference. Why is it coming to us and not Water Authority?
Oh, okay. Because each individual jurisdiction is required to have their own separate plan. So the cities, the six cities here in the county, well, seven if you include College Park, everybody has their own permit. Clayton County has their own permit. Because it's the county who is responsible and, and this is the counties all around the entire state, everybody's required to have their own separate permit. Now, CCWA, through our intergovernmental agreement, we help you manage the activities. When it comes time to file another permit, we prepare that permit, we prepare that management plan also. Because technically, CCWA is a separate entity from Clayton County Government. So we help the county in managing that. On an annual basis, once the swamp stormwater management plan is submitted and approved by EPD, every year, we have to submit an annual report on the activities that we have done throughout the year. And you probably see, you've seen me here just about every year, and every five years, we have to refile for that permit and that swamp.
Okay. Well, I know we pay a stormwater fee to you all, so are we working in conjunction with each other or are you all providing information to us?
So the information, which information are you talking?
The information from EPD or?
So every year, yeah, we prepare a report, annual report, to the county.
Okay.
And I'm here every year as part of that swamp. And we ask that, it has to be signed by the CEO of the county or the highest elected official for the county, which Chairman Turner here, and also the cities of the six cities here in the county. We require the mayors to sign that same report. We repair, we prepare several different reports for each of the entities here in the county and we submit that annually, the annual report by June 15th of every year. And in every five years, we have to reapply for that permit and then prepare a stormwater management plan for each individual municipality.
Okay. I was just trying to get that connection, so yeah, thank you.
And the, the stormwater fee is totally separate from this.
Exactly, okay.
Yes, yes. Stormwater fee is tied to the actual stormwater perm, not the stormwater permit. I'm thinking the actual stormwater agreement between the county and the six cities.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Thank you, sir.
Well, 'cause number 31.
Go ahead, go ahead. Let Mr. Reed take the poll.
Do you want me to go out of order or take?
No, take whatever one is next. He's not going to one.
Okay.
Well, since we're talking water, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, if we go with 31.
What's the one before that?
30.
30. Sure. Take 31.
Okay. Resolution 2024-270, a resolution authorizing Clayton County to submit local amendments to the Georgia Plumbing Code to the Department of Community Affairs for review and commentary within 60 days for the purpose of improving water efficiency, to authorize the Chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to perform an effective date, I'm sorry, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerick.
Same kind, same thing. When I was reading this and all the information, I seriously thought Water Authority. So.
Yes, this is county. Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners, good evening. This is a Water Efficiency Code Amendment. The Water Authority hired a consultant to work on water efficiency and they met with various entities in the county that deal with water. We being one of the, one of the jurisdictions that issue permits for plumbing. So what this is, it's an improvement to our plumbing code. It does not have any conflicts with what we have. It only enhances what we have. And this is for us to send it to DCA, our Department of Community Affairs, to look at it, bless it, then when it comes back, then we'll bring it back to the Board to adopt. Did I answer it?
Kind of. I'm still, so the plumbing and, but then we're talking water efficiency.
Yeah. Water efficiency, it talks about devices in a home, what you need. It actually talks about how you plumb a house, the kind of things you have in it. What you heard before was a stormwater management system, which is on the outside. The plumbing code is in inside of the house. The best ways to use, to use water, devices that doesn't consume a whole lot of water. How we can build better homes when it comes to plumbing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Resolution, this is going back to item 30, Resolution 2024-269, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to approve street lighting for this SR 85 widening project to be included in the Georgia's Department of Transportation Project scope, to authorize the Chairman or his designate to execute all necessary documents and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget, to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Hammerick.
Last question. GDOT, Georgia Department of Transportation. I'm reading this and I'm thinking, okay, we're asking for lighting and all for Highway 85. Earlier in the year, we had a Zoom meeting with the Commissioner of GDOT Transportation, State Transportation. And we were discussing or talking about lighting on 75 North from Morrow up through Old Dixie Highway, because it's dark. You know, you come through Henry County, all the way up and all, lights, lights, and then even Morrow, you have lights. But the minute you pass the entrance ramp at Morrow, it's just black and all. And we were discussing that, asking, you know, can we do that? How can we do that? You know, what is the, what does GDOT have to do with that and how we can get it done? And nothing, did we ever get, evidently, we didn't get that resolved because we don't have the lights, it's still dark. But yet we're asking, somebody's asking for lights on Highway 85, which has lights already. So explain that to me, please.
Good evening, Commissioners. The difference in this situation is the State Route 85 widening project is a project they already have in their program.
They being?
Georgia DOT. The request for interstate lighting was something, yes, they heard, but they currently do not have a project programmed or scoped on the interstate for lighting. That's something they would have to develop and constitute at some point. I would assume they're working on trying to get something into their program based off of the meeting earlier in the year you referenced. But this is, this is a separate project that they are in their scoping phase of what the project's gonna entail, other than the obvious four lanes widen to six lanes sidewalk. The, in one of the steps they go through, we were in a meeting and they asked us about lighting. Since that's something that we, we, this board, has been choosing to support over the years, their standard practice is they need a committal from the local jurisdictions. Their policy is they will pay the capital costs if it's associated with the project to get the lights installed, but then the local jurisdiction will have to fund the maintenance and the energy associated with it. So that's what they're asking for is, are we in support of that? And they will include lighting or consider including lighting into their project, which normally they do not. If we're not in support of it, they, they won't include it.
Okay. So the county pays the maintenance?
We, we will pay the maintenance and the energy costs. And typically, almost every lighting county right now, we go to Georgia Power. Or if it's in an area where EMC is the regulatory agency there, and we contract with Georgia Power for the energy and, and maintenance.
Can we do a follow-up to find out what's going on, what the status is for the lights? Right, on 75, particularly Morrow up through Old Dixie.
Yes, ma'am, certainly. We can reach out to Georgia DOT.
And even on that part of Old Dixie, that's, I mean, it's just like nobody lives in Clayton County right there.
Be happy to.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Yes, Chair, yes, don't leave yet.
Commissioner Davis.
I do have one. So are there any lights slated for the Battle Creek, Mount Zion road widening? And if not, could we look at possibly getting those installed with this project?
Currently, there is not lighting on that project. I would just say when that project was scoped 20, 25 years ago, lighting was not a, a issue at that point. I would not recommend trying to add it to the project with the current contractor, but since it is a county, they're county roads. After the project is complete, that's when I would look into trying to contract with Georgia Power to add the appropriate lighting at that point. And it could be street lighting, it could be pedestrian lighting, it could be decorative lighting, if we're willing to pay the cost where Georgia Power will quote us.
Okay. And it wouldn't be more economical to do it now while that project is still being, I know it's already been scoped, so would that be the increase in price right there?
We, we can go to the contractor and, and ask for, for a cost. Definitely, we can do that. Generally speaking, a change order on a contract that size, they're looking for things.
I understand.
So it, it will be probably a hefty cost, but I mean, if you would like, we can definitely ask them for it.
Thank you.
Stanford, you have some?
Yes, sir. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Davis, specifically to your question, do remember, we're gonna be working with Georgia Power. City of Atlanta just entered a program called Light Up the City Project where they identified a lot of the, the low lighting areas and where there seem to be blighted crime throughout certain areas. They have a program that we're right now investigating to see whether or not it's something doable. So if we are looking at, you know, respective roads within the county that we feel like would be something that we can add to that project, we'll bring something back to the Board to see if it's something that's viable and whether or not it can look at some cost containment and look at some priority areas for the county as a whole.
Yeah, I think we need to move that up the priority list.
Got it.
Do you have a list of roadways?
Part of, part of the discussion was to have that as part of your retreat in January and talk specifically about that. And then we can add that and figure out what seems to be the most practical direction.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
Mr. Chair, next on the agenda, we have board appointments, beginning with item 33 on page nine.
All right, first board appointment is to the Veterans Advisory Board. Diana, Diane Hannah's term on the Veterans Advisory Board expired on June term on the Veterans Advisory Board expired on June sixth, twenty twenty-four. New terms for four years begin immediately and expiring on June sixth, twenty twenty-eight. This is a District Three recommendation. Commissioner Allen, you have a recommendation?
Yes, I would like to reappoint Ms. Diane Hannah to the Veterans Advisory Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick, are there any questions?
I have a question. Okay, okay, it expired, we didn't.
Excuse me. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Next board appointment is to the Library Board. Ebon, Ebonique Miller's term on the Library Board of Trustees expired on November second, twenty twenty-four, new term is for three years, beginning immediately, expired on November second, twenty twenty-seven.
I'd like to hold that appointment until our December third meeting.
Okay, Madam Clerk, are you clear?
I'm clear, Mr. Chair.
Next board appointment is elections registration. Darlene Johnson resigned from the Elections Board and Registration Board. She was replaced by Pat Pular, who assumed her unexpired term. This term expires December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. This is a board chair selection, and I'd like to reappoint Ms. Pat Pular, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, are there any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Madam Clerk, that concludes the board appointments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and for that correction on thirty-five, I have recorded it in my notes. For item number thirty-six and on, we have our zoning hearings. For public hearings for zoning, citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within a ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right to rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. First, we have item number thirty-six.
Good evening, Chairman and Board members. Item thirty-six is BLC two four zero eight zero four four three. This is a future land use map amendment request for property that's located on Mount Zion Boulevard. Just wanted to note before the board this evening that items thirty-six and thirty-seven are companion items for the same location. Staff did receive notice from the applicant requesting to table this item for sixty days, so that would be the January BLC hearing, which is slated for the twenty-first of January.
Commissioner Reeves, how would you like to proceed?
Make a motion to accept their table?
Until?
Until our January twenty-first meeting.
January twenty-first, okay, that's the motion, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Did you second the motion here?
I seconded.
Okay, Commissioner Hambrick, second the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Chair, before vote, also the applicant is here to accept that sixty.
Okay, I thought you said, he did send out something also, right. Is the applicant present? Just come up so we can get your, get your voice on the, on the video, just in case you get amnesia later, we can say it was you.
Good evening, Commissioners, Josh Mahoney, attorney at Battle LPC. Happy to accept that sixty-day deferral to January twenty-first.
Oh, you're in agreeance with it, okay.
Yes.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Can we, can I vote on the thirty-six and thirty-seven in the same motion?
Yeah, I thought that's what you did. Is she able to do that, Commissioner, Commissioner, Mr. Reeves?
Thanks for the promotion. The, I believe that Mr. Mc, didn't you read both of them at the same time, just one?
He mentioned both of them.
But they're companion pieces.
Yes, he can, if he wants to bring both at the same time, he can make a motion to do both.
Well, we already got a motion and all that, so let's just take them separately. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous. Read the second one and let's do the same motion.
Okay, item number thirty-seven, that would be BLC two four zero eight zero four four four. This is the rezoning petition for property sixty-eight fifty-seven Mount Zion Boulevard, and again, the recommendation was to honor the table for the sixty days, as mentioned before.
I'd like to make, to make a motion to table BLC twenty-four oh eight dash zero four 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 until our January twenty-first meeting.
And applicant, you're in agreeance, I guess it was your request to table it, so. Okay, all right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, is unanimous.
Okay, moving along to item number thirty-eight, that'll be BLC two three one two zero three seven nine. This petition is a conditional use request for, by the applicant, for the property located at fifty ninety-two and fifty ninety-eight Clark Howell Highway, and fifty forty-five on Highway eighty-five in Atlanta, Georgia. The property is on general business, and the request again is for a, the development of a hotel. In the review of staff analysis, this will be a country inn suites that is planned here at the corner, which is highlighted between the three parcels, which has now been combined. The applicant is proposing a five-story hotel, which will house a hundred units for a hotel, and with the request, staff's recommendation was approval, and the zoning advisory group recommended approval as well. Staff did want to add a twelfth condition on the floor for clarity, and also to assist with some ongoing items that may be going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. So if the board's pleasure, I can read all the conditions, or I can read that specific condition as well?
Go ahead, read them all, read them all into the record.
You all, excuse me, I have to read from my laptop. Okay, the conditions is read as follows. All right. Condition number one, the property shall be limited to one hotel structure as stated on the submitted site plan. Condition number two, a minimum of forty percent of the structures shall be constructed of brick, granite, stone, marble, turrell, architectural compatible reinforced concrete slabs, either fitted with exposed aggregate insulated window, wall panels, or stainless steel, porcelain-treated steel, anodized, or currently finished aluminum shall be provided on these structures facade. Condition number three, walls visible from the roadways or parking areas shall incorporate changes in the building material, varying wall offsets and/or architectural features every one hundred linear feet. Condition number four, all rooftop equipment shall be screened from the public view by pipers, dormers, or other screens. The average height of the pipers walls shall be, shall not exceed fifteen percent of the height of the surrounding wall, and shall not at any point exceed the height equal to thirty percent of the supporting wall. Condition number five, chain link fencing shall not be visible from any public street. Continuing the conditions for number six, burglar bars, steel gates, metal awnings, steel rolled-down curtains are prohibited on the exterior and interior structure except on these structures rear. Condition number seven, a marketplace shall be provided inside the building instead of vending machines. Condition number eight, access shall be subject to the approval of the Department of Transportation. Condition number nine, the submitted site plan shall be approved by the Transportation and Development Department. Condition number ten, a swimming pool and exercise room are to be provided as amenities. Condition number eleven, landscaping shall be irrigated, including flower shrubs, lighting with mixture of perennials and annuals. And lastly, adding condition number twelve, the applicant agrees to adhere to the current exterior building's specifications per code if their variance application to the Board of Zoning Appeals is denied, meaning that they will have to adhere to the current code if they cannot grant, get granted relief on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Those are the twelve conditions presented before you all, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is here as well.
All right, thank you, is the applicant present, please come forward. Please state your name and any minutes you'd like to reserve for a rebuttal, should somebody be opposed.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Board members, George Harper, Paramount Engineering, eleven East Broad Street, Noonan, Georgia. I'd like to reserve, let's say, four minutes, if you don't mind. Well, as always, Tyler did a real good job presenting our case tonight. This project had actually come before you guys back in two thousand and nineteen, and the site was approved for a CUP for this hotel. There were some changes in it, they had some issues, I think, with the branding and stuff, and so it, it never actually moved forward at the time. It actually came back again, I believe, in two thousand and twenty, where they changed the number of rooms, and that was approved as well. So I think we finally have a, a project and, and a site and a hotel and the brand, everything on the same page, that we're ready to move forward this time. So with that, as you can see, we, there's three different parcels here that we're going to be combining into one. You can tell on the back of the property, there's a large wooded area that will be undeveloped, all that is floodplain, so we're only developing, let's say, sixty percent of our entire tract here. But it's a nice country inn and suites hotel, it'll be five stories. You saw the renderings, we'll meet all the architectural requirements on the front sides. We are applying for a variance for slight modification of the, of the facade on the rear of the building. And as you can see, the rear of the building is not really visible from, you know, from anywhere, because it backs up to, to all the woods there. So we are in agreement with all the, the conditions that have been placed on the property that were recommended by the Board of Zoning Appeals, Zoning Advisory Group, excuse me, and then also the additional, the condition that was placed tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have your renderings tonight?
Yes, ma'am. There we go. Yes, ma'am, so it's your standard country inn and suites. We do meet on the front and the sides, we do meet the forty percent Class A materials, which is brick, stone, stucco, all that type of stuff.
Where is your front?
This one, the top one right here is the front elevation.
No, I mean, is it on Clark Howell?
Yes, ma'am, it fronts Clark Howell. Yes, ma'am. You can go back to the site. So yes, ma'am, this, here's the front of the building, as you can see, we have the drop-off area right here, and then the rear faces the wooded area back here. There's actually a little parcel, excuse me, between us and Highway eighty-five, but it's, it's so small, it's hardly even able to be developed anyway, and it's wooded.
Come back to the mic, please.
We don't own that property, so it will remain wooded, you know, as far as what we're doing, so.
Where's your parking?
The parking is all on the sides and the rear of the building, and also we have our handicap parking along the front right there, which is closest to our, our front door.
Okay, now, the entrance?
Yes, ma'am.
For the hotel, for the rooms, is it outside entry, or is it inside?
Interior, yes, ma'am, this is a hotel, yes, ma'am, it'll all be interior.
Well, I'm asking because, anyway.
It's okay.
Any other question?
Well, I, I do have a question for my colleague here regarding homelessness, or whatever in the area. And I was telling him that there is a hotel there across the street that we've had success with, and haven't had that problem, so.
Yes, ma'am, I actually designed that hotel quite a few years ago, probably fifteen years ago, we did that one.
So will you all have that top, what do you call it?
Rooftop.
Rooftop, right, will you have the rooftop like the other, like the other?
This one won't have the rooftop, that was, that was kind of a, they were on a, a little bit different, they were a little higher elevation, and I think when we were designing that one, his idea was to be able to have the bar where you could kind of look over the new runway?
Right.
That they built and, and kind of see the, the airport, so that was what he was trying to accomplish when he did that one. This is, this will be more of your standard brand hotel, you know, your country inn and suite, yes, ma'am.
All right, and this time, this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request, please come forward.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Garber.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. With considering this gentleman's application for his request of zoning, let me say this, that certain things that need to be addressed. Number one is security. We need, we need plenty of cameras inside and outside of the hotel. The other thing that you need to consider in his request is, is people coming on the property, breaking into cars. I think the place should have a gated community, not locked, but somebody at the gate watching the parking lot. Let me remind you that this morning, I heard on the, on the news that three hundred cars have already been stolen from the Atlanta Airport, and we're having people come into our community from afar. They need to not feel safe, but know they're safe. And the other thing that I, I might ask in this request, I don't want you to think I'm foolish, but they ought to have a bar, because it's already hard enough for people to negotiate, even living here, our roadways, and having strangers come in and go to a motel, but to go out and drink somewhere else is, is a danger not only to themselves, but to the community. I need you to consider all those things. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we are out of time for those who would like to speak in favor of, as I said, this is a public hearing, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to anybody opposed? Come forward, ma'am.
My name is Valencia Hargrove, a resident of Clayton County. I just have a question more so, I'm opposing. Is it a rest, is it a restaurant in that hotel, or is it just a, a place for people to sleep? I didn't hear anything.
I'll let this gentleman answer that question. State your name for me.
My name is Mohit Desai, on behalf of Coruna Neve Properties, and the, the hotel will be your standard hotel, but there will be some amenities, like previous gentleman recommended there being a bar, there will be a bar inside the lobby, more so for, for guests, and since it is an airport property, it's for transient guests, so we, we do intend to keep it well lit, well secure, and previously, when we, we put it in for the board in the past, one of the conditions was anything that's undeveloped, to keep it as a green space, so we do still intend to abide by previous commitments, and so, no, there will not be a restaurant. We do have, you know, there will be breakfast, et cetera, served at the hotel, but there will not be a restaurant, per se, but there will be a bar.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in opposition to anybody opposed to applicant's request? All right, hearing done, sir, you got, what was it, four minutes?
Well, I know we're all ready to get home, but I, I would just be, I'm glad to answer any more questions you may have. I think Mr. Desai kind of maybe gave you a little more detail on what is actually included in the.
As to the lady's question about, I know you said no restaurant, but there will be breakfast, so can you explain how you're going to do that?
Yes, so the hotel is going to be franchised under Choice Hotels, and according to their franchise regulations and everything, there will be breakfast, but it's more so of a continental style breakfast, so, you know, quick, warm-up style foods, whether it's meats, or, you know, pastry, et cetera, but it'll be more so like abbreviated breakfast rather than, you know, full service. If that answers your question.
It does.
Any board members have any other questions?
I have one. You had stated earlier that you're already applying for a variance for the rear of the building. Why should the rear of the building look any different from the front, even though you ought to, you have parking back there? Why should the rear of the building look any different from the front, even though you had, you have parking back there?
Yes. So we, the architect on this project had gone back and forth with the, the brand and it really tried to, we modified this plan three or four different times to try to get more and more closer to the forty percent requirement. The brand came back and just had stated, listen, that, you know, on the front, we understand because it faces the road, but on the rear, it just, it, it, for whatever reason, the brand just had stated that it, it was too much, you know, of that Class A material that they normally do and just wanted to ask if, if we could apply for a variance on that. So I know that's not a great answer to the question, but it was more of the brand's desire to keep it closer to what they normally build. Yes, and this is, this is their brand new prototype, so they were trying to kind of keep it, they like to keep them all pretty similar. And so we, we did, we're able to talk them into getting more on the front and on the sides, but the rear, they, they had just said, you know, let's try to keep it closer to our, our brand, our prototype.
And also my other question would be, what is going to be your management style and control to keep it from becoming an extended stay hotel?
So we will be, we are in agreements with the franchise as well. Since it is an airport property, we want it to be well maintained and well, well kept. So it is going to be a management company that's going to be taking care of the property, that is in good standings with the franchise as well. So there will be, you know, at the time of opening, there will also be like a grand opening style where the CEO, the franchise, everyone will be at opening and so it'll be well kept as well, because they do also want to make this a frontrunner for the Atlanta Airport property.
Will you all make a special effort to hire Clayton County residents?
Yes, we're, we're more than open to, to allowing that. Obviously, that's a question further down the road when, when management takes over and when they conduct their hiring processes.
Well, and this may be a question for management too, because the airport, and I don't know how they do it, but when they have like delays and all and there are certain hotels they use for that, do you know if you all will be listed as one of those?
So we, 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 from a management side, obviously, we want to be competitive in that RFP process of going after airlines and trying to, trying to attract their, their, their customers and passengers. So we will try to be as competitive as possible, try to attract, attract those passengers so that way, if there is a delay or there is a cancellation, there is X, Y, Z, we're able to bring in these transient passengers, at least for, whether it's for one night or et cetera.
Will you have the shuttle buses?
We will have multiple shuttles going throughout the day and into early mornings and late nights.
Any other questions? Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, for item thirty-eight, BOC two-three-one-two-dash-zero-three-seven-nine-plus-CUP, I recommend approval.
Is there a second?
Is that with the conditions?
I'm sorry, thank you. With, with the conditions and with the extra condition that was added, yes.
All right, that's the motion. I'll second the motion. I mean, yeah, and are there any other questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Okay, moving on to the next item. I'll go ahead and read the case. That would be item number thirty-nine. This is going to be BOC two-four-zero-seven-zero-four-three-three. This is a conditional use request by the applicant. Again, requesting a CUP for redevelopment of a existing convenience store for a brand new convenience store and fuel sales for a property located at sixty-seven-twenty Mount Zion Boulevard in Mar-a-Georgia. This property is around one point one zero acres of land. It's near the intersection of Mount Zion Boulevard and Maddox Road. I have my graphics up here shortly. In regards to this particular site, there is already an existing gasoline service station, so already stated. And the applicant is requesting to redevelop the site to include a larger building space for, this is an existing photo, if I can get the graphics just to stay on point. But this is a picture of the existing gasoline service station and they're proposing to demolish this site and redevelop it to include a larger commercial space with additional gasoline service pumps. With that information being provided, staff's recommendation was for approval with conditions being that we have an opportunity for redevelopment in this area and the zone advisory group and their recommendation also recommended approval of this request as well. And I'll read to you all the conditions of that approval. For this request, one, the approval that vending machines, paper stands and other similar devices must be located within the building. Condition number two, one trash receptacle to be be provided between each gasoline service dispenser. And lastly, condition number three, a minimum of two electrical charging stations to be provided within the parking area. That concludes the conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions for staff.
All right, is the applicant present? Please state your name and business and let us know with how many minutes for a rebuttal should somebody be opposed that you would like to come back and have comments on.
Okay, good evening. My name is Amy Laws and this is my colleague Sonia Verani. We are representatives for the property owner, Nabeel Memmon and G C Holdings. We are seeking a conditional use permit to allow.
Would you like to save any minutes for a rebuttal?
This will be pretty short, so.
At the end, if somebody's opposed, would you like to come back up and say something?
Yes, we'll reserve like two minutes.
Two minutes, okay. Set the timer at eight, please. Please proceed, ma'am.
So we're seeking a conditional use permit to allow for an expansion.
Speak a little louder for me, please.
Can you hear me better now?
There you go.
Okay, for an expansion of an existing convenience store located at sixty-seven-twenty Mount Zion Boulevard. We plan to build a forty-one-hundred square foot convenience store with four gasoline fuel pumps. We believe that this expansion would help us better meet the needs of the community. So thank you for your time and we're open to any questions that you have regarding this project.
If you have a question now, yes.
What's the first question? What hours are you looking to, to have for the gas station?
So ideally, to pair with this expansion, we would like to go to twenty-four hours a day.
Would, Tyler, can you, can you read the condition from, from Zag, what hours they'd recommend it? I believe that was one of the conditions.
I do apologize. The condition that was mentioned by Zag included that the operational hours should be from seven to ten.
Are y'all good with seven to ten for operating hours?
We prefer twenty.
Speaking of mic, please, ma'am.
We prefer twenty-four-seven just because for employees, it's easier for shifts to change for longer shifts because of course, gas station shifts are longer than usual, but we would prefer twenty-four-seven.
Any other questions?
If I may add, if the reasoning for hours is the security reasons, we did mention in the meeting that we had previous to this that we would have any additional security, as in a security guard, access to the cameras at any time needed. So we are willing to see to that.
What time do you guys close now?
Right now, this store closes at ten.
When do you currently open?
I believe it is eight.
I just, I, I can't, I can't approve with the.
Well, we're not to that part yet. We're, we're about to have a public hearing.
Oh, okay.
So at this time, is there anybody who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Garber.
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Members of the board, let me say this about the fueling industry. And we are a twenty-four-seven county with things moving in and out twenty-four hours a day. You are putting these people in business at a disadvantage by limiting their time and competing with other stations that work twenty-four hours a day. Let me say this, that redevelopment is one of the most important things you can do for our county. They are redeveloping a site that, that is already existing where you continually add more. Redevelopment is an important thing to our community and keeping it whole. I would recommend for BOC twenty-four-zero-seven-dash-o-four-three-three that you let them have a twenty-four-seven station and approve their redevelopment. Thank you.
Is there anybody else like to speak in favor of? Is there anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? You have two minutes if you would like to come back to the podium.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask if you had any more questions that we could answer before moving forward.
I don't think the board has any further questions, so how would you like to proceed at this time, Commissioner Reese?
Well, I want to see if the, would the applicant be willing to, to meet again so we can, so we can talk about the hours and meet at the next zoning meeting, which is.
December, what?
When is our December zoning?
So.
Go ahead and ask you a question.
So I had a question. So we had our meeting earlier this week, correct, regarding the research that was further needed for the hours of the operation of this convenience store? And along with that, was there any disagreement or anything that we can help with that? Because I know, of course, it is something that I'm not sure would change by the December hearing or that we could bring to that hearing of maybe making our chances of going twenty-four-seven increase.
Well, it's a, it's a residential area. It's a highly residential area and although the other gas station that's further along is, I believe the QuickTrip is twenty-four hours. They are immediately off of the highway, whereas the, the location is, is further down in a more residential area and so just you need a little bit more input from, from the folks who live in that area about how having a twenty-four-hour gas station will affect that, that neighborhood or those, those neighborhoods.
Okay.
So you're not opposed to tabling this matter until the December?
December seventeenth.
Seventeenth, you're in agreeance with that?
Yes.
So what's your motion, Commissioner Reese?
I make a motion to table, to table BOC two-four-zero-seven-dash-zero-four-three-three until our December seventeenth meeting.
Mr. Reese? Now, just be for decision only, so you won't have another public hearing.
Okay.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Are there any questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you.
Moving along, we're on item forty. That will be BOC two-four-zero-eight-zero-four-four-one. This is a conditional use request by Paulson and Mitchell Incorporated for a conditional use for heavy equipment rental facility with outdoor equipment storage, truck, trailer parking and services at forty-four-thirty and forty-four-thirty-four Old Dunn Court in Ellwood, Georgia. Again, mentioning that this property is located within Commissioner District One and is currently zoned heavy industrial. In regards to the recommendations, staff is recommending or has recommended approval of this request with conditions. The Zone Advisory Group recommended denial of this request and I'll read the conditions from staff's recommendation. One, the trailer storage area shall be paved. Two, the color scheme of the proposed building shall be an acceptable color from the Highway forty-two overlay design guidelines. Those were the two recommendations in terms of conditions from staff and again, the Zone Advisory Group recommended to deny this petition. And I believe the applicant is here and also has a presentation for you all as well. But before then, did anybody have any questions for staff and consulting team?
All right, applicant, please come forward.
Good evening, Commissioners. Josh Mahoney, Attorney at Battleaw PC, three-five-six-two Havisham and Northlake in Tucker, Georgia. Here this evening, speaking on behalf of the applicant pursuant to this conditional use permit.
Any minutes for a rebuttal?
Three minutes for rebuttal, please.
All right, we'll set the timer for seven.
Thank you very much. So we're here this evening to talk about a property that is really in kind of the heart of an industrial area. Taking a look at the site's location, you can see that it runs on Anvil Block Road, right where six-seventy-five and Anvil Block intersect. When I get to the site plan, you'll actually be able to see six-seventy-five on the site plan. It is, I mean, it's right there on it. We're surrounded by a truck stop, other distribution centers, other industrial uses are all around this area. That's really who our neighbors are. So taking a look, we got the zoning map and the future land use map. I'm not sure why everything got shrunk down. I apologize for that. But what I can tell you is the property is zoned heavy industrial. On that top map, everything in that dark purple that you see is also zoned heavy industrial. So we are squarely in an industrial zone. It will remain an industrial zone as well and you can, you can tell that by the future land use map down here at the bottom. Everything in kind of this gray brown color that you see here, that is planned to be industrial going into the future. And so this area is today industrial. It will remain industrial as we move forward. So this is the site plan that we're proposing and what we're proposing is a, a, a equipment rental facility that also maintains fifty-five-foot trailers, like, like you see on a tractor trailer. And so what you've got here are two points of ingress and egress, both off of Old Dunn Court. Folks will be able to enter in through that southernmost entrance, park their car, go into the building, rent the equipment that they're looking to rent. However, there are also some gates that kind of cordon off the back half of this building and that's where the maintenance takes place. And what happens back here in the back of the building is you have these fifty-five-foot trailers that come in and, you know, sometimes they, they get damaged, whether they, they hit something or something happens to them and they need to be repaired. Those trailers are brought in and they're stored in the back of the building where there's a parking location for those trailers. They're kept there until they're able to be fixed up in the, there's some bays on the backside of the building that, that they are brought to and maintained. We are proposing some fencing around, around the building, including black metal fencing around the majority of the building as well as a black PVC coated chain link fence in the back surrounding the parking area. So here's an example of an existing, this is an existing facility. I want to say this is out in Gainesville. This is the, a Briggs site and so you can kind of get a sense of what the building is going to look like. These trucks that you see down here in the bottom left, these are called hosteling trucks. Those are what's used to move the trailers around from the site. So these are our elevations. As you can see, they're very similar to what you just saw on the existing building. This is what we're looking to bring here. You can see where we've got the bays in the back of the building where those trailers are brought to be maintained. So this is an example, this is, this is an example of the existing storage space for the. So this is an example, this is an example of the existing storage space for the trailers. This is a gravel lot. Full disclosure, Commissioner, when we first spoke to you about this, we were looking to do the gravel lot and have that condition stricken. However, we'd like to move forward this evening accepting staff's conditions. So this part is actually kind of irrelevant, but it made it into my presentation nonetheless. So again, here are those conditions that staff read off. One, the trailer storage area shall be paved. We now accept that condition. And two, the color scheme for the proposed building shall be acceptable colors from the Highway 42 Overlay Design Guidelines. Again, we accept that condition as well. With that, I'll take any questions Joe might have. I've got Mr. Blake Liktai here with me, who is a representative of the developer. If you have any questions for him as well, he can, he's here to help. Thank you.
Yeah. Can I, for the developer? Hello again. Can you talk about the number of trucks or the number of additional trucks that you will see moving on, excuse me, on Old Dunn and coming through the area?
Sure. So my name's Blake. I'm with the developer, Milestone Land Company. Again, so the primary business, if you could actually go back for me on that last picture you had of the other site, the existing facility? The last one. There you go. So the primary business is actually renting and maintaining these trailer spotters, which are these single cab tractors that you see here. And as a new business that they're trying to get into is the repair of the trailers. They told me that at any one time, it would be a lot of trailers to have 10 of them at any one time. So it's going to be very minimal traffic as far as like a tractor trailer coming in and out. And then, I mean, if you look at the aerial of the surrounding area, there's literally thousands of tractor trailers at distribution facilities surrounding. So this is going to be a very immaterial amount of trailer movement in and out that nobody's going to feel. The racetrack next door, directly across Old Dunn Court, it does have a truck stop component, so there is a ton of traffic in and out of that at all hours of the day. So this project is not going to be felt in that regard at all.
Would you say that this use is complementary to the warehouses and the logistics centers that are currently in the area?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for bringing that up. So again, the primary business is these trailer spotter, single cab tractors, which are actually used on sites of distribution facilities. Like, for example, like Amazon is a customer of Briggs Equipment. So they would maintain and maintain their fleet and rent out their fleet. So it's directly going to service businesses in the immediate area.
And I just want to confirm. So the sales area, will it be open to the general public or will it be, will it just be for certain suppliers?
So it would be open to the general public, but I mean, it's going to be a very specific person that's going to walk through the doors.
Thank you.
All right. At this time, it's a public hearing. Is there anyone who, I think we are out of time for, yes, sir?
You all have, since some of the questions came from the Commissioner, you have some time.
Okay. Did you take note of when that was?
About three minutes.
We'll get, set the timer for three minutes. So if there's anyone here who would like to speak in favor of, please come forward. Yes, Mr. Garber? Mickey Garber, Unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. On number 40, BOC 2408-441, I would like to say that I recommend approval of their facility. Number one, it's in Clayton County. Number two, it's in a heavy industrial area already zoned heavy industrial. And with all the tractor trailers moving throughout the county, having a convenient place to go to get that trailer repaired would be less traffic issues on the road with a wrecker dragging something a long way. Now, I don't see anything wrong with this business in District One, heavy industrial, Clayton County. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Come forward, sir.
Dwayne Jones. I live in that area right there. The racetrack, that was fine. They tried to put tractor trailers going up and down Grant and Williamson Road. The roads are too small. The tractor trailers, I agree, they need a place to be repaired. But if you're going across from the racetrack or next to the racetrack, you're going to have them trucks going up and down them backside roads, too. And I've already been run off the road by one tractor trailer on some of them two lanes over there. And an old lady about got hit over there by one, threw her whole shopping cart out into the ditch. But I agree, there should be someplace to fix them. I used to drive an 18-wheeler. But that used to be a real good residential area. And you said, he said it's for, I mean, it's open area zoning for your tractor trailers? You know? Yeah, I had a lady behind me that fought like heck. Her house, like I told you, her grandpa had that property. Her house was enlisted as industrial, her property. So she had to fight like heck to get it back to residential.
Thank you, sir. Your time is up.
I appreciate it.
Yes, sir. At this time, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? All right, sir. I think you got, what, three minutes?
Tyler, can you put up the site plan, please? I won't take too long. Just the one comment I heard we think, I think we should address is tractor trailers using the side roads. The great part about this plan is that it is right off of Anvil Block. That's the entrance right there. So there's not really a lot of wiggle room for drivers to not see how to get in to this facility. And if they do end up passing it, they're just traveling into an industrialized area where they could turn right around and get back into this facility. And again, not a lot of traffic coming to this site. As I stated, if they have 10 trailers on site, that's a lot. So we're talking maybe two or three a day if they're really cranking them out. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Just one comment regarding the comment about residential. The closest residential is like a mile away, and that, even that area is already completely surrounded by distribution facilities that are like a buffer between our site and that site. The closest, like, true residential neighborhood that's, I would call it true residential, is off, like, on the other side of the top right of that large distribution facility on the other side of the highway. And then one other comment that we didn't touch on is the jobs. There's going to be initially 10 up to 20 good-paying jobs. Their current facility is in DeKalb County, and their lowest-paid employees are earning $55,000 a year.
Commissioner Reeves?
I would like to make a motion to approve. I would like to make a motion to approve BOC 2408-0441 with the conditions from staff and the zoning advisory group accepting the developer's condition for the paved road. Their...
Asphalt parking.
Yeah. Asphalt parking and the additional condition.
Color scheme.
The conditions are stated by staff, I think, are the ones we agreed to. So that's exactly, I think we're on the same page.
You're agreeing?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other questions?
I do have one.
Commissioner Davis?
I've heard everything about the servicing of these trucks, but also, two, I see something here about outdoor equipment storage and also truck and trailer parking, just overnight parking. What type of parking is this?
Again, so...
As well as what type of...
Yeah, so the primary...
Speaking to the microphone.
The primary business is those, I'm not sure if you could see the, could you...
It's over here.
Okay. Yeah, so the, those single cab tractors, that's the equipment. That's the primary business, and that's largely what's going to be parked outside. The trailers, it's going to be off in the back, behind the building. It's not visible from the highway. It's not visible from Anvil Block Road, and those are just going to be a regular trailer that would get serviced. So it's not even, we're not even like servicing the actual tractor component, just the trailer.
Any other questions? Those in favor of?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Item number 41, that'll be BOC 2408-0447. That is a modification request by Tar Personal Care Home LLC for, excuse me, modification of an improved conditional use permit for a personal care home at 1180 Monday Smith Road in Jonesboro, Georgia, which is currently zoned RS 180, Single Family Zoning District. This property is located in, within Commissioner District Three's district. Staff acknowledges that the applicant is requesting the necessary changes needed for additional services and clientele for the site. It does not appear to be any detrimental issues found from this request, and staff's recommendation for this petition would be for approval of conditions. And the Zone Advisory Group also followed that recommendation with staff's conditions as well, and I'll be happy to read those conditions for the record. I'll just leave the site plan, and I'll read the conditions in for the record. The conditions we'll read as such, one, no more than 23 resident clients are allowed at the subject property per the applicant's request. This modifies the previous condition of nine residential clients. Condition number two, the proposed residential addition must be attached to the existing primary structure by a covered and paved breezeway, as shown on the elevations presented by the applicant to staff. And lastly, condition number three, all parking areas must be paved and strided. That concludes the conditions and recommendations for this petition. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have for me.
It's the applicant present. Please state your name and business, and if you want to save any minutes for a rebuttal.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Suzanne Antar, and I'm here with my husband, Kavya Antar, and our children, of course, in the back, District Three, resident of Clayton County. Five minutes.
Five minutes, all right. Please proceed.
Okay. Commissioner Allen, it's good to see you, Chairman, and the rest of the Commissioner. Thank you for allowing us to stand in front of you this evening. The last time we stood here in front of you, in front of the Board, we came to show our gratitude for what you did for us about five years ago by allowing us to receive a conditional use permit to open up Tar Personal Care Home. Since this evening, we are here to request a modification of our conditional use permit that we currently have, as Mr. Tyler already stated, to a total of 23 beds. Before coming here tonight, we had sat with the community members and explained to them our plans, what we were doing. We also showed them the site plans and what we've been doing within the last close to a decade in Clayton County. We also sat with several other committees, the ZAG committee, zoning board, and every requirement that they ask, we have met those requirements and willing to meet any other requirement moving forward. So I'm just going to get straight to the point, and I see, I see, I have a presentation just for those who are not familiar with us. Tar Personal Care Home has been in the community for, has been in the community and has been providing affordable, safe environment for one of our most vulnerable members of the community, our elderly, disabled, and veterans seniors, who do not qualify for nursing home care financially or physically, and also do not meet the requirement for large assisted living facility. We have stood in the middle ground to provide services for this population for close to about a decade now. Let me go. How to just move forward? Like this? The next? Okay. So when we first started, of course, this is where the place looked like. Since then, we have poured into it by developing and making it look more presentable, giving our resident a place that felt like home, and also making sure that all of our resident care are met there. Make sure they visit the doctors, get their medication management, and services that they would not normally get if they were living on their own or being homeless in the street. This is just one example of the cases that we had. With one, this particular resident came to us homeless and Southern Regional had called us to see if there's anything we can do to take him in, and this is, the two top pictures is what he looks like now. And of course, we have our own Commissioner here, Commissioner Allen. She came by, she and her husband, last year this time, actually, they actually provided our Thanksgiving turkey for us. And this is one of our residents. He's been with us for about five years now. Tar Personal Care Home is not just a facility, it's a community, and this is what we are here today because the need for this particular population, those that don't meet the regular nursing home requirement or the bigger facility, we put in the effort to make sure we provide a community for them in a place that they can call home. And I just want to show you got a couple of pictures. A lot of our gentlemen, our resident that you see here, actually had their first birthday celebration from us. They never had any birthday parties or even have family that celebrated them as much as we tried our best to do. This is just the improvement. We're looking to get bigger rooms and provide the existing portion. Let me see if it's in this slide. There's a part of this joint in the existing building. We have a little center there where we have birthday parties. We have Thanksgiving parties, things like that to keep them active. And the area that we're requesting to extend the building, as you can see, we sit on almost seven acre of land, so we're barely touching, not even 10% of the land. And in the space and the drawing from the site plan, nothing is being disturbed. That area that we want to extend is already clear. Hello. Can you, how do I play this? And this is just one of our years where he was 85 years old when the law called him, and he was with us for good.
Your time is up, ma'am, but you do have five minutes on the back end, so you can come back and pick up.
Okay. Well, I think I'm pretty much done. I just wanted to share with you.
All right. At this time, we're having a public hearing. Those in favor of the applicant's request, please come forward. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Anybody opposed? Sure you don't want to share the last five minutes or any part of it?
All right. Mr. Tyler, can you please play that video for us? There's no volume. Okay. Well, in this situation, I was having, this is Mr. Bob, and as you can see, he had Parkinson. And he was just telling us his story, how he was at the hospital, and when it came time for discharge, they couldn't get in contact with any family member. And in that moment, he knew that he was, as he said, "I was about to get kicked out." And I got a call from the hospital, spoke to him, and went in there, as he said, within 20 minutes, she was there, and that was the change of his life. And he didn't know what he would have done without us, pretty much.
Well, listen, I've been personally out to your home, and it is, you're doing great work, so I appreciate what you do for our seniors who need that type of help and care. So thank you. Commissioner Allen?
Okay. I would like to make a motion to approve with conditions, BOC...
Okay, I would like to make a motion to approve with conditions BLC two-four-zero-eight-zero-four-four-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick, are there any other questions? Here are none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Thank you all so very much.
Item number forty-two, this will be BLC two-four-zero-nine-zero-four-five-one. This is a county initiative, this is a boundary map amendment requested by the Board of Commissioners to amend the zoning map by excluding certain parcels from the Lee's Mill Transit Rented Development, short for TOD overlay district. The Board of Commissioners approved that initiation resolution, twenty-twenty-four-two-two-five, on September the seventeenth in twenty-twenty-four this year. This will be in collaboration with Commissioner District Two. Zoning staff is recommending approval of this request, and the zoning advisory group recommended approval of this request as well. And again, the reasoning for this is that there is an introduction of new maps and overlay boundary areas. This is simply just to do readjustment, just to ensure there's no conflicts with those areas and make sure that we have everything aligned as according to all of the changes that recently happened in that particular area. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have for this request.
And Mr. Reed, this requires a public hearing as well, correct?
That's right, Chairman.
Alright, this is a BLC, Board of Commissioners' request. This time it's a public hearing, is there anyone like to speak in favor of this request? Anyone like to speak in opposition to, anybody opposed? Commissioner Hambrick?
Yes, I would like to approve BLC dash two-four-zero-nine dash zero-four-five-one. Right, as zoning staff has already recommended approval, along with the advisory group.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Alright, item number forty-three, we have another map amendment. That'll be BLC two-four-zero-nine-zero-four-five-two. Very similar to the previous request you all heard. This was the boundary map amendment requested by the Board of Commissioners to amend the zoning map, excluding certain parcels from the Tara Boulevard Overlay District. Again, it's a collaboration with Commissioner District Two and Commissioner District Four. This resolution mentioned was twenty-twenty-four dash two-two-seven. As you all have seen on the screen, and again, we are realigning and making sure there's no conflicts with a certain uses and requests based upon the recent changes that have happened in the area. Staff's recommendation is approval to make these changes, and the zoning advisory group mirrored that recommendation as well for approval.
Alright, this is board initiated as well. This is a public hearing, is there anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in favor of? Anyone in opposition to? Anybody opposed? Commissioner Davis?
I make a motion that we approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I do have one.
Commissioner Davis?
These nine properties, I know they were approved within the hospital overlay. Is that correct? And now we're removing them?
That is correct.
Which overlay will they fall in, or will they be into an overlay? I just wanna be sure.
Yeah, there would be the hospital overlay, but also excluding from the Tara Boulevard, so it would be the hospital overlay.
Okay. Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Moving on, next item we have is item forty-four. This is BLC two-four-one-zero-zero-four-five-six. This is a conditional use permit for a tractor truck parking and tractor trailer storage located at sixty-thirty Highway eighty-five in Riverdale, Georgia. Again, this is for a conditional use for the request for the property that's currently zoned MXI, which is mixed-use commercial industrial. This zoning district has come before you all for reimagining and rescoping that particular zoning district for development standards. So in this request, the zoning advisory board and also with staff, staff did forward over a recommendation that was inconclusive for denial, and Zach recommended denial the request. But due to the applicant submitting the information requested, staff has amended that recommendation for approval with conditions. And I'll read those conditions for this particular request, which is one of two on the same property. Condition number one, all parking areas for trailer storage shall be paved. Two, the associated office shall be located on-site. Three, landscaping planted is to be provided along the parking area along Myers Road. And lastly, number four, all site access points and improvements are to be reviewed and approved by the Clayton County Transportation Development Department before the issuance of a land disturbance permit certificate of occupancy. So I just wanna clarify, also following those conditions, that number two states that they would have an office that's already existing on the parent parcel. So there's existing suites there, so they would have an office there on the property. So I just wanna clarify that for those who may have a question about that. And lastly, number four, if there's any improvements needed that requires a land disturbance, that would have to be reviewed by the Transportation Development Department. So I'd be happy to answer any questions in regards to this petition of one of two for this location, and the applicant is here as well to answer any questions.
The applicant will come forward, please. State your name and business, and if you would like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal.
Chairman, Commissioner Stephen Jones, on behalf of the property owner, Midhour Investments, I'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal, Chairman.
Thank you, sir, please.
Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you. As I said, I represent the property owner. This property has had a storied history, it was developed in the early eighties. It fell into some disrepair or deferred maintenance. The current owner acquired it, invested a substantial sum of money into the improvement of the property, the exterior, the paint, putting in substantial sums into repaving the entire site and rehabilitating it, and really investing a ton in this site for its business resonance and for the businesses that choose to call Clayton County home and choose to call this site home. This conditional use permit which you have before you today and the associated one which will follow are uses which are now conditional under your MXI zoning district based on the amendment which this board adopted earlier this year. And this board also rezoned this parcel earlier this year to MXI. This lot has been in this condition or similar conditions since the nineteen-eighties when this property was developed, and it was a gravel lot. It has been used pretty much since that time for parking and for unenclosed outside storage. Currently, Glacier Transport is a company which provides refrigerated transportation for companies such as HelloFresh or other food service companies that require refrigerated transportation. And you'll see they are storing their empty refrigerated trucks on this site. We would ask that you approve this request so that they may continue to operate on this site and continue to call Clayton County their business home. I've talked with Mr. McSwain about the recommended conditions. We do have one which we would ask this board to remove, and then the others, we would request this clarification that Mr. McSwain made from the podium, make their way into the board's conditions imposed on this property. Number one, the first condition, that the parking lot be paved. This parking lot has been a gravel parking lot for forty years. So when I was spitting chiclets, there was a gravel lot out there. We'd asked like, we'd asked that you allow it to remain the same, be operated the way that it has for decades. Two, the associated office on-site, we just want that to be clarified that the office can be on the larger parent tract, not just on the site. Because the CUP portion of the property, the portion of the property devoted to this CUP doesn't have an office. This use only requires an office intermittently, so they have a small office in the leasing suite when they do require that. So we'd like that clarification. And then number four, that all site access points and improvements to be reviewed and approved by the Transportation Development Department be done prior to the issuance of an LDP or a certificate of occupancy. We just would like to clarify that that only applies if there are improvements to the CUP site. So if we come and modify the site or erect a structure on it, then that would apply. And based on my conversation with Mr. McSwain and his explanations from the podium, we're in agreement as to that's what the intent of staff's recommended conditions are. Again, I appreciate you, appreciate the board, Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Hambrick, very much for the dedication of this property and her district and the continued economic vitality of this property. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those at this time. I'm also accompanied by Mr. Midhour of Midhour Investments, and again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Alright, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Mr. Garber?
Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. On their request, I would like to address the issue of their request for the parking areas for tractors, trailer storage. And they wanna leave it a gravel parking lot. Let me just give you this one caveat to that issue there, is if it's left a gravel area, any spillage of dangerous material would be contained in that gravel, rather than runoff into our water system in the county. It would be easier cleaned up left gravel. That's all I'd like to say, and for that, I would like to say I'm in favor of their tractor trailer parking area. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to, anybody opposed? Sir, you have five minutes?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm just glad Mr. Garber spoke in favor of my application. Would you wanna talk about the gravel parking condition? Mr. Garber's exactly right, but there's also the added benefit of if it were paved, with the tractor trailers on and off, that would require frequent maintenance of that paved structure. That maintenance of the paving as opposed to the maintenance of the graveling is substantially more expensive. And that's money that we could continue to reinvest in this site. And like I said, the current owner has invested substantial sums and wants to see this property remain in its revitalized condition and continue to provide a home for businesses that wanna locate there. And so we'd like to put money into more aesthetic things and creative things on the property than paving. So thank you so much. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to take those at this time. And we'd ask that you approve with staff's recommended conditions subject to the modifications I discussed. So I'd be happy to recite if that would be helpful.
Commissioner Hambrick?
Yes, Mr. McSwain and I talked regarding the paving or the gravel, and we came to an agreement. Is that correct?
Hello, Commissioner, so the discussion regarding what's there now and the reasoning for staff's recommendation. So what's there now is gravel, it's been operating that. But where staff is going in our recommendation is based upon where we want to move forward with the county in terms of improvements and actually adding more to the site than what's existing. Again, it's the recommendation if you choose to accept that. But as it is right now, it's just for gravel.
Okay, well, after working with the company and all for years, and how much better this property looks, and it's really an asset to Clayton County and definitely to Highway eighty-five, I would like to remove, I guess, condition number one about the parking, and also it remained the gravel. And if that's okay with you all?
Yes, Ms. President.
Okay, and if it is, I would like to offer a motion that we accept BLC two-four-one-zero dash zero-four-five-six, CUP. With the conditions minus number one.
And for the record, read those two that she is approving.
Okay, so the motion we forwarded at all, excuse me. Condition number one, the associated office shall be located on-site, the office area of the parenting parcel. Condition number two, landscape plantings to be provided along the parking area along Myers Road, and for all site access points and improvements to the area to be reviewed and approved by the Clayton County Transportation Development Department before the issuance of a land disturbance or a certificate of occupancy. And that's regarding new, any new development that's needed for the site.
Okay, and I believe you explained number two, about the on-site office space.
Yes.
Is there? Okay.
Right, and that's the new condition number one.
Okay, thank you.
And for the record, the applicant did agree with those conditions.
Yes, Chairman.
Alright, is there a second to the motion? Second to motion, are there any questions?
Oh, yes. I have a question about the gravel lot, would there be a, what is it? Permaflex membrane underneath the gravel separating?
Good evening, Commissioners, Owen Midhour, Atlanta, Georgia. No, ma'am, this is a gravel lot. We produced aerials dating back to nineteen-eighty-three or eighty-six showing such. There is no membrane under this gravel at present. All we've done is restoration. We spent millions of dollars cleaning this property up, removing junk cars, tires, debris, litter. We're very proud of what we've accomplished. We've proven out the case that if you deliver a clean, professional environment, we can attract businesses to the north part of the county.
And I would like to thank you all for that, too.
We thank you as well.
Somebody who policed that area for several years back in the eighties, nineties, yes. Y'all have done a tremendous job cleaning that area up.
Thank you very much, sir.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Okay, so item number fifty-five, that'll be BLC two-four-one-zero? Four, I said forty-five. Forty, okay, I'm sorry, it's late, forty-five.
That's a southern twang you got there.
Alright, so BLC two-four-one-zero-zero-four-five-seven. This is a conditional use request for the subject property, for Arrowhead Incorporated, for conditional use permit for outdoor storage pods and waste containers, again, for the same property, sixty-thirty Highway eighty-five in Riverdale, Georgia, which is currently zoned MXI. Very similar to the request before, but this will be for dumpster pods and waste containers at the location. With the information provided and the updated information provided by the applicant, staff's recommendation before this board would be an approval with conditions. Staff's conditions will read as such, the associated office shall be located on-site, which will mirror the same language that we had in the previous request. Item number two, or condition number two, all site access points improvements are to be reviewed and approved by the Clayton County TND Department before the issuance of land disturbance or a certificate of occupancy. So those are the two conditions that mirror similar to what was approved before. Zach's recommendation was for denial, and staff's recommendation is approval with those two conditions. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and also have the updated site plan before you all, so you can see the layout of the property, the particular area.
Applicant, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, Stephen Jones, again, the law firm of Taylor English, on behalf of the owner. This is a very similar request to the one you heard before, when you saw the aerial of the property, if we could go back to that, Tyler. You previously had the southern site, this is the northern site. When these property, when this property was developed in the nineteen-eighties, those two gravel lots existed, and they've been used for outside storage since then. The current user of this property, and you see here, that northern site is on the left side, the one that you just approved is on the south side. The current user of this property uses these for roll-off containers. They may be used for a job site or a business that needs waste disposal, so you fill the container up, it's then hauled off, dumped somewhere else, and then the empty container is stored here. And you can see just to the north where Mr. McSwain's cursor is, that's that lot. So this lot functions very similar, or in a similar manner, to the other lot. The office is in the leasing suite, they store their equipment here. When they need it, they come and get it, they take it to where they need it, and then they store it there again. We agree with all staff's recommended conditions on this one with the modifications that Mr. McSwain discussed. That is that the office can be on the parent tract, and then on the last condition, that that last condition only applies to new improvements within- within this portion of the property that's the subject of the CUP. Uh, again, we really thank and appreciate Commissioner Hambrick's work on this in support of this project, this property, and the businesses that operate here, and staff's support and work to get to this point through all the modifications that we've had, not just on this application, but on the other ones. If you have any questions on this, I'd be happy to take those at this time. If not, I'll address any issues that may come up during public comment during my rebuttal phase. Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anyone like to speak in favor of? Anybody in opposition to? Anybody opposed? All right, Commissioner Hambrick.
Yeah, is Erica still here?
I don't see her.
I just wanted to thank her, too, for the work that she has done on this project.
Very much so.
Right, okay, I would like to approve, uh, BLC two-four-one-zero-dash-zero-four-five-seven CUP with conditions.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any questions? Right here and done, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the latter end of the agenda, so item forty-six, um, to accept the public improvements and indication of a final plat for Auburn Ridge Phase Two subdivision. Again, this is for a final plat, um, authorizes the county to accept the public improvements and maintenance bonds as depicted on the final plat for Auburn Ridge Phase Two subdivision, uh, which is for single-family attached townhomes, uh, eighteen rear-loaded and forty front-loaded, uh, residential, um, homes. Uh, this property is located near ninety-thirty Warren Drive in Riverdale, Georgia, uh, within Commissioner District Two's area. So staff has reviewed over the submitted information, uh, layout and descriptions and agreements, and is recommending, uh, approval as stated to be signed, um, by the board. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you all have for the zoning portion of this.
Can you give us that address again? It sounded like you said ninety.
Ninety-fifty.
You messed these numbers up.
Yeah.
Right.
Located at ninety, excuse me, I need my glasses. Ninety-thirty Warren Drive in Riverdale, Georgia.
Thank you. It's nine thirty.
Nine thirty. Nine thirty, not ninety-thirty, nine thirty, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Reed, correct me if I'm wrong, but the next three items does not require public hearing?
That's correct.
All right, is there a motion to approve? So moved. Commissioner Davis made the motion.
Wait, hold on.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Are we doing forty-six?
Mm-hmm.
District two.
Commissioner Hambrick, do you have a motion?
Yes.
He asked.
You asked for a motion, so moved.
Is there a second? I'll second, let me second, I'll second the motion. Any other, any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, issue unanimous.
Item number forty-seven, again, this is for a final plat acceptance, uh, set the public improvements as indicated on the final plat for Rex Road for Sonata, uh, Town Home subdivision. And this again authorizes the county to accept the public improvements and maintenance bonds as depicted on the final plat for Rex Road, which is Sonata Town Homes, for forty single-family attached townhomes located at twenty-two sixty-five Rex Road in Morrow, Georgia. Uh, this is within Commissioner District One.
Commissioner Reeves, do you have a motion?
I would like to make a motion that we, um, approve item forty-seven.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner.
Uh, for the record, um, can I, can I call Director?
Sure, who, who you need?
Oh, Director Matarko.
Mr. Matarko, please.
Just for clarification purposes, can you explain the purpose of accepting the public improvements and maintenance, um, for the roads?
Yes, ma'am. When a residential development is constructed, um, the homes, apartments, well, not the apartments, homes, townhomes, single-family residents, um, almost a hundred percent of the time are going to be located on public streets. So this is a transfer from private ownership into public ownership where the county accepts the streets as public access, um, for the county now. Then the developer can go on and start building his homes on the individual lots.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Who's, uh, who's paying for the, um, the, uh, construction of those roads?
The developer.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Any other questions?
She paid for the maintenance.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Okay, uh, we're at the last item, I think it's number forty-eight. Uh, this again is the final plat approval for the Thomas Estates subdivision. Um, again, this is the acceptance of the bonds and street public improvements for the final plat, Thomas Estates subdivision, which is for sixty single-family detached lots, uh, which is located at ninety-one, um, ten, so nine-one-one-zero Thomas Road in Jonesboro, Georgia. This is located within Commissioner District Three. Uh, staff's review, uh, is for the approval and as met all of our requirements as stated.
Commissioner Allen, you have a recommendation?
Yes, um, is it possible that I could table this until the next meeting, uh, was it December seventeenth?
Is there, is this, Mr. Matarko, is this time sensitive?
Everything is time-sensitive, supposedly.
Is there questions that he can answer that we can get this approved?
Essentially, for us, it's not so time-sensitive, for the developer, it would be, um, but for the county, it's not.
But for the developer, it would be because of what? Money.
He's financing it, and this is a major step to going on to the next phase.
So he can't move until it's approved?
No, sir, he cannot.
But I mean, in, in, in defense, I mean, we have a new commissioner who wants to understand the, the product.
I understand.
It's not that the development hasn't been approved, it's been approved, they just want to know, um, anyway.
No, they want to turn it over to the county so they can proceed with the building.
Yes, the, the layout, the design, how many lots, the conditions, all that were approved probably several years ago. Yes, ma'am. It's, it's just turning one phase of construction over to the next, but it's, it's your pleasure, so.
So I, what's your motion, ma'am?
We want to table it to, uh, December seventeenth, thank you.
Is there a second to table?
Second.
Any questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes.
Yes, litigation, real estate, and personnel.
Is there a motion to go into executive session for real, real estate, litigation, and personnel?
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it is unanimous. All right, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reeves, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Mr. Reed, please take them together.
Okay, first, I have Resolution twenty-twenty-four-two-seventy-one, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a third amendment for a commercial lease agreement with LIT Industrial Limited Partnership, providing for the lease of property for use by Clayton County Police Department to authorize the chairman or his designate to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses may be required by the terms of the agreement to provide an effective date of this resolution for other purposes. And actually, Mr. Chair, I would actually suggest that we take them separately.
That's what we're just discussing. So, yes, uh, which one did you just read?
Uh, just the Resolution twenty-twenty-four-two-seventy-one. This is on the lease for, um...
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
All right, I have, um, two, um, agreements for, uh, purchase of property. The first is for forty-one seventy-nine Gilwood Road, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-five-four, in the amount of, um, up to two-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand-nine-hundred-nineteen dollars and twenty-nine cents. And the second is for two-seventy-six Blaylock Street, Atlanta, Georgia, three-zero-three-five-four, in amount of up to one-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixteen dollars even, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget, actually authorize the chairman to execute either agreement, both agreements, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate revenue sources and expenses as required.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Uh, the next is a global settlement on behalf of Publix for opioid litigation, and this is, um, and for claims in Georgia, Alabama, and Florida, and that is in the, um, summary of, it's a public supermarket, and that is in the amount of totally three million eight-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand-four-hundred-and-ten dollars. Authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect appropriate, uh, revenue source and expense. Again, this is for all three, so this is not everything that's coming to the county.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Uh, yes, so that averages out to a million each state?
Well, there's a whole complex formula of how it's all...
Okay, I'm just saying.
Right, yeah, um, the...
Well, I don't want anybody to hear that and think...
We're getting all that.
That the county is getting that money.
No, this is, this is for all three states, all counties, all, you know.
Okay.
Yes.
But the county has received settlement money for opioids in the past?
Um, we have received some, I believe.
I didn't even know the amount, I was just curious if this is something that, I mean, that the county in the past has received funding from?
It's ongoing, if I'm correct. There's different companies as they settle, then that money trickles down.
Right.
So this is reoccurring?
Yes.
Different companies, though. Some have filed bankruptcy. All right, any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Uh, and the final is, um, a settlement and agreement and a re, release, and then between Willie Robinson and Levon Allen in his capacity as sheriff of Clayton County, and that is in the amount of fifty thousand dollars. This is in a, uh, civil service board appeal, uh, authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expenses required under the terms of the agreement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed?
Extinction.
One extension for, uh, in favor, it passes.
That's all I have.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, that's all.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.